Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to this side session of the Arab Forum for Sustainable Development on Accelerating Progress in the 2030 Agenda. This is a special session on mental health and psychosocial support in the context of COVID-19 implications for the Arab region. Thank you very much for those who have joined. We expect others to join in the course of time. Before I hand over to the moderators, let me just introduce myself. My name is Dr. Anirban Chatterjee. I am with the UNICEF's Regional Office for Middle East and North Africa Region as a regional advisor for health and nutrition. I just wanted to provide a couple of important pieces of information, both for the participants to be able to interact with the panelists and send in their comments and to ensure that we have a smooth and successful event. We recognize that with this technology, sometimes it doesn't keep up with the way we want it to be, so I thought a quick reiteration of the ground rules would be useful. May I request that if you're not speaking, please mute your microphone so that the sound quality is not impacted. Do note that the session is being recorded and a message should have appeared on your screen asking you to provide your permission for your parts to be recorded so that you can continue. Do note that we have translation available in English and Arabic for those who would require the translation. It will be available by clicking on the interpretation icon. It's a globe in the zoom control bar. For those who want from English to Arabic, please select where it says Chinese and select English if you want Arabic to English. Simultaneous translation is available. If you do not require translation, just switch it off. We do have, we expect this to be an interactive session. We have the moderators as well as the panelists, whom you can reach out to with questions. We request that you please use the Q and A icon to ask a question instead of the chat. That will allow us to monitor it and then pass on your question to the appropriate person that it is addressed to. If you see a question that you like and want to also ask, you can just upvote with the like icon, which is already asked by another colleague. It's the thumbs up sign. And then the questions will automatically be ranked on the number of likes. I hope that we will have a smooth session on the technology side. And with that, I would like to hand over to the two moderators of the session, the regional directors of WHO and UNICEF, WHO Eastern Mediterranean Region and UNICEF Middle East and North Africa Region. Dr. Ahmad Mandari, over to you, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it for the introduction. Bismillah, Rahman, Rahim. Salaam alaikum. Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening, colleagues. It is our great pleasure and honor to have you all with us here in this very important session in which we are going to share ideas, suggestions, remarks, wisdom on mental health and psychosocial support in the context of COVID-19. What are the implications for the Arab region? And in fact, before I give the floor to my dear brother and colleague and friend Ted, I'd like us to share with you few remarks on this important issue. As you all know, colleagues, you know, mental health is one of the most neglected areas of public health. Before COVID-19 pandemic, it is estimated that mental health conditions were accounting for about 13% of the global burden of disease. When the COVID-19 started last year, it has brought, you know, to the forefront of the significance of mental health by all means, the existing gaps in provision of mental health and psychosocial support services as well as barriers preventing the most vulnerable groups from accessing these important services in different countries. And now when we talk about this issue, sharing with you numbers, studies carried out on mental disorders in many countries during the COVID-19 pandemic, it showed relatively high rates of symptoms of anxiety, for example, ranging from 6 to 51%. It showed also high rates of depression ranging from 15 to 48%. Post-traumatic stress disorders ranging from 7 to 54%. And indication of arise in domestic violence, suicide, self-harm, and substance or alcohol abuse. Now, people with these pre-existing mental, neurological, and substance use disorders, in addition to the problems they are facing, they are also experiencing relapse or worse and worse of their conditions at a time when access to care is disrupted and also increased risk of COVID-19 infection and mortality as well. Prior to COVID-19, as you all know, colleagues, most of the countries in Arab region were experiencing rapid social, political, and economic changes, resulting in civil unrest and conflict driving migration and displacement within the countries and between countries. All these factors have put not only the social, political, and economic systems under immense strain and pressure, but also exposed the individuals and populations to protracted stress and adversity, which are well-established risk factors for mental and substance use disorders. Hence, the rates of depression and anxiety are among the highest in Arab countries, unfortunately. My last remark is, you know, COVID-19 has exacerbated the already broad mental health situation, making provision of mental health and psychosocial support services an urgent priority for all populations in the region, especially those whom we call or we live in the vulnerable group. So thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I'm really very pleased. And I'd like now to give the floor to Mr. Dr. Chiban. The floor is yours, Ted.
Thank you, Dr. Ahmad. Good afternoon, colleagues, friends. This session on mental health is a special session of the Arab Forum for Sustainable Development this year, which is, as you know, the primary regional mechanism for the follow-up and review of the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. It's the platform to advocate for the SDGs and is a real opportunity to give us a look at how we can recover from the impact of COVID-19 pandemic to achieve sustainable development. Mental health and well-being are specifically addressed in the Sustainable Development Goals under SDG III, which emphasizes the inclusion of mental health in universal health coverage. Specifically, target 3.4, which calls to reduce 1/3 of premature mortality from non-communical diseases through prevention and treatment and the promotion of mental health and well-being. Target 3.5, which strengthens the prevention and treatment of substance abuse, including narcotic drug use and harmful use of alcohol. And of course, target 3.8, which is about achieving universal health coverage. This special session on the area of mental health provides us with a unique opportunity to share knowledge and expertise and discuss key and emerging issues and explore solutions to recover better, build resilience to future crises, and accelerate our efforts on mental health in the MENA region and towards achieving the SDGs. The objective of this special session are first, to discuss the impact of COVID-19 on the mental health of the population, especially on the vulnerable population, and to promote a clear understanding of mental well-being in the Arab region in order to build back better. Second, to discuss the importance of and share lessons learned from countries on how to build mental health and psychosocial support into community structures, including those that support families and parents, and the need to bolster mental health and psychosocial support integration within primary healthcare, maternal health, and other health services, but also other social service delivery systems, such as education and the social welfare workforce. And then third, to discuss how governments and development and humanitarian partners, as well as civil society organizations, can support the humanitarian development nexus to build back better national mental health and psychosocial support systems and promote community resilience and well-being, especially among young people who have really felt the brunt of this COVID-19 situation. We have a really distinguished panel to speak at this special session. Each special panelist will present for 10 minutes. There will then be a Q and A session for 25 minutes, where you can, as Dr. Anirban has said, propose your questions in the Q and A box, and you'll be supported to have those questions answered by the panelists and other experts on hand. In the last 15 minutes, panelists and moderators will wrap up presenting us with conclusions and key messages. I don't want to delay things further. So let us now move to the panel, starting with Dr. Najat Mjid. Dr. Najat Mjid is a special representative of the Secretary General on Violence Against Children. As a high-level, global, independent advocate, Dr. Mjid promotes the prevention and elimination of all forms of violence against children in all settings. Medical doctor in pediatrics, Dr. Najat has over the last three decades devoted her life to the promotion and protection of children's rights. She is a member of the Moroccan National Council on Human Rights and founder of the non-governmental organization BEATI, the first program addressing the situation of children living and working in the streets of Morocco. She is the recipient of numerous awards and honors for a strong commitment to protecting the rights of the child. Dr. Najat, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ted. Thank you. You hear me well? It's okay?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Distinguished participants, it's a pleasure to take part in this important discussion on mental health and psychosocial support in the Arab region in the context of COVID-19. As you know, every child has a right to the highest standard of mental health and well-being. This means much more than the absence of mental illness or disability. It is a state of well-being in which an individual realizes his or her abilities can cope with the normal stresses of life and can contribute to his or her community. But we know that many children are denied this right. No country or region is immune. Just to let you know globally, 10% to 20% of children and adolescents experience mental health conditions. Half of all mental illnesses begin by the age of 14. Mental and substance use disorder are the leading cause of disability in children and young people worldwide. And as highlighted by my colleagues of WHO just before, we also know that the burden from mental and substance use disorder is high in the MENA region. Despite this, there is still a lack of resources devoted to supporting children's mental well-being and health. The relative lack of attention to mental well-being is especially concerning because mental health is a major issue of concern for children themselves. Child Help Line International has reported that the two most significant concerns for children contacting its member helplines in recent years were abuse and violence on the one hand and mental health on the other. Distinguished participants, countries in the Arab region have different experiences, resources, and challenges. There have been efforts to strengthen action on mental health and psychosocial support in the recent years. There has been progress on the centralization of psychiatric units into general hospital training programs for healthcare professionals, strengthening the social workforce, public awareness campaign, as well as in relation to psychosocial support, parenting, and counseling, for example. But despite such progress, there is still an urgent need to scale up action on mental health and psychosocial support for different reasons that are specific to this region. War, terrorism, political instability, social disparities, and inequalities, gender discrimination, poverty are crucial determinants of mental well-being. Children and family living under constant threat of sudden deaths, bombardment, oppression, displacement, homelessness, or unemployment experience a significant burden of mental health condition. There is in the region also high prevalence of violence against children. This includes violence related to harmful social norms and practices, such as child marriage, FDM, sexual and gender-based violence, corporal punishment. The smuggling and trafficking of children towards the main MENA migration routes are also issues of great concern. Cultural factors are also important determinants. Mental illness is stigmatized, rarely discussed, and strongly associated with shame. Distinguished participants, exposure to violence and other adverse childhood experiences is often traumatic. It can evoke toxic responses to stress that cause both immediate and long-term physiological and psychological damage. The consequences include depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, borderline personality disorder, anxiety, substance use disorder, sleep and eating disorder, and suicide. The cumulative impact of adverse childhood experiences on children's mental health is shaped by the way in which children experience violence, trauma, and stress as they move from early childhood to adolescence. These consequences can be passed from one generation to the next. The human and economic costs of the mental illness is significant, not just for children and their caregiver, but for society as a whole. Distinguished participants, the situation regarding mental health and psychosocial support in the Arab region was challenging before the pandemic. COVID has magnified the difficulties. Confinement measures and school closure have had a profound impact on children's mental well-being and development. It has been undermined by isolation, uncertainty, and stress, increased risk of violence online and offline, domestic violence, disrupted education, and anxiety within households created by economic hardship. The pandemic has created new challenges for the mental well-being of children, but it has also compounded the situation for children with pre-existing mental health condition. We know that children's services have been among the most severely disrupted services during the pandemic, both at the global level and within the region. The pandemic has also created specific challenge for mental health and psychosocial support services in conflict and humanitarian setting. But important action has been taken in response, such as adapting psychological first aid for the COVID-19 context, continuing comprehensive and cleaning clinical mental health and psychosocial services, care in humanitarian setting, and addressing substance use and addictive behaviors during the outbreak. But still, still, many vulnerable children, families, and communities are left behind. Distinguished participants, as the world builds back better, there is an opportunity to reassess priorities and invest in mental health and well-being through a holistic and life curse approach. We need to change our mindset and view of mental health. It's not just a problem for the health sector. We must consider all determinants of mental health to support children's mental well-being. This holistic approach to mental health is what the interlinked and indivisible nature of the Convention of the Rights on the Rights of the Child and the SDGs call for. This approach considers risk factors at all levels, the individual child, the family, the community, and society. It also considers the child development across the life course. The perinatal period from the start of pregnancy until one year postpartum is crucial. Supporting mother and tackling gender-based violence has a decisive influence on their children's mental health. We must also be mindful of the distinct nature of different periods in a child's development, such as early childhood and adolescence. Our efforts should be informed by the growing evidence on cost-effective intervention to support children's mental health and well-being. These interventions are underpinned by a better understanding of the risk factors at the level of the individual, the family, the community, and society. We also know more about the protective factors, such as building children's resilience to adversity. We know the great value of preventive intervention that focus on maternal mental health, mother-infant interaction, and parenting support. We know the great value of community-based rehabilitation programs. We know the positive impact of socio-emotional learning intervention in schools that adopt a whole-school approach involving staff, students, parents, and the local community. We also have better evidence on the clinic and treatment of mental health conditions. To translate this evidence into action, we need a comprehensive and coordinated approach. We need intersectoral and multi-stakeholder collaboration that connects the development and humanitarian sectors. We need a wide mobilization of all stakeholders, the whole government, not only the health sector, civil society, faith-based organizations, different professional groups, private sector, media, and ICT companies, financial institution, UN system. Community and religious leader in this region can also play a key role in changing social norms to promote and support mental well-being. The views and experiences of children must shape the design, delivery, and evaluation of responses. They are already taking action to connect and support each other, but more must be done to ensure they are truly empowered to be part of the solution, including through peer-to-peer initiative. It is essential to have the right number and distribution of skilled professionals. This means not just mental health professionals, but also social workers, teacher, and other. The frontline must be equipped with the resources and knowledge to detect mental health issues and risks, refer them to the appropriate services, and provide psychosocial support. Mental health, psychosocial support, quality, and available services across the continuum care in communities should be easily accessible for children and their caregiver with a particular focus on the most vulnerable. Substantial additional investments are required, but we can also make better use of the existing resources. For example, by moving away from institutionalization and late intervention to ensuring proactive prevention and early detection with a specific focus on the most vulnerable. Distinguished participants, we must build also on the lessons of the pandemic impact. This means recognizing mental health and psychosocial support services as lifesaving and essential into both emergency preparedness and longer-term planning. This must be duly integrated with child protection, physical health, justice, and education services. These integrated services should also be embedded in robust social protection system and universal health coverage that include mental health and psychosocial support, which address the socioeconomic determinants of mental health. We must recognize that despite the fiscal constraints due to the pandemic strengthening mental health and psychosocial support for children and their caregivers is an investment and will be key in building and enabling inclusive and resilient environments keeping children safe, ensuring their development and mental well-being, ensuring and ensuring no child is left behind. Distinguished participants, as the world builds back better, the main message is that we cannot go back to the normal. We must choose a better path than the one we were on. We know what the problem is. We have the knowledge to tackle them. What we need is political commitment, a fundamental change of approach, and adequate resources in the broadest sense, and strong mobilization of all key stakeholders, including children and young people. If you want to keep our promise by 2030, while building sustainable and resilient recovery from the COVID-19, we cannot afford to allow the neglect of children's mental health and well-being to continue. Change is possible. I look forward to working with all of you to make it reality. Thank you.
Dr. Ahmad?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ted. And thank you very much, Dr. Nagat, for your insight and wisdom on this issue by sharing with us such valuable information. Now, may I invite our second panelist, who is a known figure, key leader on this area, Dr. Shekar Saxena, who is a professor of the practice of global mental health, Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health in USA. Professor Shekar, he in fact, you know, worked as a psychiatrist by training. He joined the World Health Organization in 1998. And then from 2010 to 2018, he was the director of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse at WHO. During his leadership of WHO's Mental Health Action Plan, he adopted, you know, he was adopted, which was adopted by the World Health Assembly, and mental health and well-being. And it was included in the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, which is really something, a very major milestone in such work. Professor Shekar, he'll talk about building back better, bridging the development and humanitarian nexus of mental health and psychosocial support services. So Professor Shekar, the floor is yours, please.
Thank you very much for this very kind introduction. And also thank you for inviting me. I'm delighted to join the Arab Forum for Sustainable Development. And I want to recognize the commitment that the countries already have for mental health and psychosocial support and the increased need for continuing with this support in future. I also want to begin by recognizing the enormous work that UN agencies are doing in this region, including WHO's own efforts, which I was certainly more aware when I was working for WHO. I had long association with WHO. And I appreciate all the work that is being done by the WHO Emmerich region and other members of the UN family. Building on some of the comments that have already been made in the introduction as well as by the first panelist, I'd like to present a few pieces of information and some conceptual background as to why mental health and psychosocial support was needed in any case at all times, but it has become especially important during and after the COVID-19 pandemic. And what are the implications of this for the Arab world? If I could have the next slide, please. I would like to begin by presenting that mental health has to be seen as a dimension and not as a disorder. Mental health is important for all of us. And all of us need to value, protect, and promote our own mental health and of people around us. There could be positive mental health. Some of us could have mental distress. Some others might have a mental disorder at some point of time. And some of us have a stable psychosocial disability. But something can be done about it wherever we are on this spectrum. We can promote our mental health. We can protect our mental health. We can prevent mental distress from becoming a mental disorder. And finally, if we have a disability, we can provide support for a recovery. And during COVID-19 pandemic, most people have moved from left to right on this spectrum. For example, if we had good mental health, we are now having some mental distress. I'm having some, and I'm sure many of you will have some distress in adapting suddenly to the situation that we are thrown in. If we had a mental distress, we might actually now be having a mental disorder. And we'll come to the fact that many more people now have a mental disorder. And if we already had a mental disorder, we might have more disability. So this shift from left to right on this spectrum is something that we need to recognize and something that we need to be really prepared for. And the mental health and psychosocial support is actually the best way to handle mental health as a dimension. Next slide, please. Now we go on to say what is the burden of the mental disorders. And this is depicted in my next slide, which says that already there was a lot of burden. But in the last 25 years or more, the burden has actually increased. I'm talking about the right side of the slide that I showed earlier, the real disorders, which are as real as physical disorders. The burden has increased almost 50% in the last 25 years. And this is true for low, middle, as well as high-income countries and for all regions of the world, including the Arab region. So mental disorders account for a very large percentage of the overall burden of diseases. And most of it, although not all, is because of the disabilities that it creates. Mental disorders do kill people prematurely, but they also create a large amount of disability which lasts some time, the whole life. And that is really something that we need to respond to. Next slide, please. We will now see that this burden is actually the highest in the young age groups. This slide shows you the amount of burden which is there because of mental and substance use disorders as well as because of Alzheimer's disease and self-harm, leading on to suicide. And you can see the burden is the highest between the ages of about 14 to 35. It's the young people who begin to have mental distress and mental disorders. And while they should be studying, they should be contributing economically to the society. And while they should be studying, they should be contributing economically to the society. They are suddenly struck by the disorders that sometimes last the whole lifetime and create a large impact on themselves, their families and the societies in general. I'll go into the next slide, please. And this slide shows you further consideration of the facts that we were discussing. Next slide, please. That during the COVID period, self-reported anxiety and depression are there for all people, all groups of people, but it's the highest in in the young age group. And this slide shows you that the peak is around twenty-five years of age. And these data, which are still unpublished, but I am part of this study, is done in twenty-eight countries, including a few from the Arab world. You will see within a few weeks this article being published, but I'm showing you a preview of that. The highest anxiety and depression symptoms are in the young age group, adolescents and young adults. And also it is higher, a little bit higher amongst women compared to men. Next slide, please. And this is something that is partly because of, directly because of COVID disease, but a lot of it is because of social and economic consequences of the pandemic. It's the job and financial insecurities, it's the stress of working from home. Like many of you, you are joining this meeting from home. I am also joining from home. And this creates added distress. Medical treatment and disruptions are there. School and colleges closure. Millions of children are attending school online, which is not the usual way they do things. The social exclusion and bereavement, many of us have lost dear and dear ones. And lack of access to food, which is very important, including as was referred to earlier, increased incidence of domestic violence against women as well as children. And lastly, of course, the fear of infection and contamination. All of these factors together are giving rise to very high amount of mental distress and mental disorders. Next slide, please. And all of them are creating a large impact on us and is depicted by the UNDP Human Development Index, which this slide shows you starting from nineteen ninety. All of the human index, Human Development Index were showing every year an increase. And suddenly, during the last year, the projected decrease is extremely significant. And this is something that we need to be aware of and should be prepared for. Because suddenly, the economic indicators, the educational indicators, the lifespan in many countries are going down and disabilities are becoming very common. So this is, this slide shows very clearly that we are living through very unprecedented times and we need to take unprecedented steps to look after our social and emotional well-being, which are enshrined in the WHO definition of health. Next slide, please. Although all of us are affected, but there are certain population which are very vulnerable. It's the low-income groups, it's the migrant workers, which who are very commonly there in the Arab world. Persons living in refugees and camps and and other exceptional situations, which again are very common in the Arab world. Incarcerated individuals living in prisons, also in mental hospitals. Women and children who are experiencing domestic violence and abuse. Frontline workers, like the healthcare workers, when everybody else was asked to stay at home. The public health workers were asked to do double duties and they are especially exposed to the virus. And they, some of them have died, some of them have contracted COVID with long-lasting impact. And those are the people who are very vulnerable. And in general, as I showed you earlier, children and young people are very specially affected. Next slide, please. Mental disorders in humanitarian emergencies are a very special consideration. And some of the work that I was involved with earlier showed that one in five are affected when there is a humanitarian emergency. And this was based on conflicts, but the humanitarian emergency that we are facing now in terms of COVID is nothing short of that. In fact, it might actually have more impact. And we can anticipate that one out of five will have a clear mental disorder and we need to be prepared for that. Next slide, please. There is an impact of social isolation and loneliness which is becoming very common. And this recent report from the National Academy of Science in USA showed a very clear connection with social isolation and loneliness as a risk factor which not only give rise to mental disorders and disabilities, but also to mortality. In fact, social isolation and loneliness is responsible for increased mortality amongst all people, but especially amongst older age group. And this is likely to impact all of us in the future to come. Next slide. We need to be very careful about public messaging and we are all guilty of that. Many organizations that we represent talked about for a very long time, social distancing, when actually we should be talking about physical distancing because we need more social cohesion and connectedness right now than ever. And social distancing sends a wrong message. It could be construed as socially disconnected, which is not what we recommend. And so we need to be very careful about what public messages we are disseminating. Next, please. And also, we need to be careful that we are already short of mental health workforce. All over the world, we have less mental health workers, specialized as well as non-specialized, than what we need. And the situation is especially bad in the Arab region. This slide shows you that we have only seven point seven mental health workforce per hundred thousand population, when we need actually many times that workforce. So we were already short and now with the increased need, the gap is going to be much, much larger. Next slide, please. We need to organize our mental health services in the most logical way, which means self-care and informal community care should be available in the largest amount practically for everybody. And mental health services through primary healthcare in general hospitals and specialist care should be available only to those people who need it. They cost a lot and should be available in lesser quantities. Unfortunately, the pyramid is too small. That means we have few services. And also the pyramid is lying many times upside down. This is especially true for many Arab countries, which have more specialist services and less general health services and less informal and community care. We need to make the pyramid bigger and we need to make it lie the way it is shown in the slides. Next, please. The impact of COVID-19 on mental neurological and substance use disorders on the services is very high. This rapid survey shown by, done by the WHO shows very clearly that the Eastern Mediterranean region, all countries had a disruption in the mental health services and this is something that we need to correct. Next slide, please. I will finish off by saying what the United Nations Secretary General has said in his policy brief. We need to apply a whole-of-society approach to promote, protect and care for mental health. We need to ensure widespread availability of emergency mental health and psychosocial support. And we need to support recovery from COVID-19 by building mental health services for the future. Next slide, please. Let us build back a better mental health system and link it to sustainable development. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shekar and Dr. Shekar, thank you very much for pointing out that mental health is a dimension, that we all are suffering from mental distress, but also really for focusing on the personal and social costs and economic costs of mental health and indeed for pointing out the most vulnerable. And it's striking how young people in particular have been affected by mental health. Colleagues, the next panelist is Dr. Abi Al Shamai. Dr. Abi Shamai is a psychiatrist and currently the head of the National Mental Health Program at the Ministry of Public Health in Lebanon. Dr. Al Shamai led the development and currently oversees the implementation of the first national mental health and substance use strategy in Lebanon. The strategy aims at reforming the mental health system in Lebanon towards community-based mental health services in line with human rights principles and the latest evidence. Dr. Abi, the floor is yours and again, we will work on the translation.
Thank you, Dr. Shaiban. Thank you for your kind invitation. I'm very honored to be part of this esteemed panel and with such eminent speakers. And I feel personally extremely grateful to see both the regional directors of WHO and UNICEF dedicating their time to this special session. I believe this will most certainly send a clear signal to the government of the member states about where mental health should be on their priority agenda. And I hope that this momentum will carry on after this session. I believe as Dr. Saxena has shared, that COVID-19 has proven to be more than a pandemic or a public health matter. It is pushing us as humanity to question our priorities and is challenging the resilience of the economies and the health systems we've built. It has also shed led, shed light on our interdependence as nations, organizations and individuals and on the central role that mental health has in curbing this pandemic and in preventing long-term repercussions on populations' health and well-being. I personally think it has all the hallmarks of an existential crisis for humanity. Within that crisis, I'll be zooming in and sharing with you the story of a very small country in one of the most complex geopolitical regions of the world with the highest number of refugees per capita. One in four persons in Lebanon is a Syrian displaced person for almost a decade now. And in the last two years, Lebanon has been dealing with multiple crises. A political crisis that culminated in October twenty nineteen and still ongoing. An economic crisis with a huge amount of international debt. A tenfold increase in the rate of the US dollar to the Lebanese pound. And more than half of the population suffering from poverty. A COVID-19 crisis. And on August fourth last year, one of the biggest non-nuclear explosions of modern history that decimated half of, half of the capital, killed more than three hundred people, injured more than six thousand and displaced around three hundred thousand persons. A legitimate question that can be asked here with all that is going on, is mental health really a priority? Are there other more pressing needs to address? Before delving into the rational arguments, I'd like to share with you a personal story. I was seven years old. War was raging in South Lebanon. Bombs were falling around the house. We had to flee for our lives. In a matter of minutes, my parents needed to make decisions and take action. Decide on which road is the safest. Grab the family papers and photo albums. And I cannot stress enough, by the way, on how healing those photo albums proved to be for people who had to live their homes as we did. A few difficult days and dangerous days on the road before arriving to Beirut. I still recall how much energy they've put in the first few years to ensure that we ate, we had a warm place to sleep and had access to education. If they were severely distressed or had developed a depression, anxiety or any other mental disorder and did not have access to appropriate timely care, their capacity to cope with stress and provide for us would have been severely affected. And maybe I would have not even been here with you today to talk about MHPSS and COVID pandemic. The deeper the humanitarian crisis, the more vital mental health is. Fast forward. Thirty-six years after the day we had to run for our lives. Seven years after launching the National Mental Health Program in partnership between the Ministry of Health, WHO, UNICEF and IMC and scaling up the humanitarian response to the person affected by the Syrian crisis in Lebanon. And two years into one of the most difficult period Lebanon is going through in his modern history. The same holds true. In time of crisis, mental health can be a matter of life or death. One might argue that maybe it is better to focus on the economic and political determinants on curbing the pandemic, on scaling up vaccination and everything else will fall into place. I say by all means, do focus on that, but do not polarize the discussion between social determinants and COVID on one hand and mental health on the other. Both need to be addressed equally. If you have a slippery sidewalk and people are falling and breaking their legs, you wouldn't wonder if it's better to take people to the hospital or fix the sidewalk. You would do both because that's the logical rational thing to do. The same, the same applies to, to mental health. As a matter of fact, now more than ever, investment should be done in mental health. With COVID-19, millions around the world have lost loved ones and were unable to properly mourn them. More are living in isolation and fear. Health workers are depleted and burnt out. Natural support networks for individuals and communities are severely impaired. If we're hoping to support people rebuild their lives, their communities, invest in their future and work for a better one for their children, they need to have the energy, clarity and belief that things can be better for them and their children. Attending to mental health needs of individuals and communities when responding to COVID-19 pandemic is as important as attending to their physical needs. Otherwise, the next pandemic will be one of ill mental healths. Putting mental health as the core of all national plan, including COVID-19 response plan, is what the National Mental Health Program and its partners are relentlessly working on in Lebanon. We know that crisis by definition disrupts system, increases stressors and increase the risk of ill mental health and decrease access to usual support system. But we also know what can be and should be done through the Isaac Guidelines of MHPSS in humanitarian setting and the work of the MHPSS Reference Group and the guidance note they issued on COVID-19. We know as well from previous crisis, as shown in the Building Back Report of WHO, that building back better mental health system is possible when responding to humanitarian crisis. We also have a clear roadmap with WHO Global Action Plan for Mental Health and their new special initiative for mental health that encourages countries to have a system-level approach to reforming their mental health system. And they're supporting twelve countries right now to make proof of of concept. I personally believe using the WHO Blueprint for Special Initiative is the best shot for countries to have a real chance of improving their mental health system and the mental health of their population. We also know about the huge role of investing in early childhood development. Parenting support programs use mental health and I'm very happy to see UNICEF stepping up their advocacy for investing in child and adolescent mental health. In Lebanon, we were able to use all those momentum and resources. And we've developed with UNICEF and WHO, a MHPSS Response Action Plan for COVID that aims to respond to the needs of the general population, COVID patients, health worker and persons with pre-existing mental disorders who were already benefiting from face-to-face services before the pandemic. We're implementing this action plan with all our partners from different stakeholder group and sector using a collaborative governance model. We're ensuring that the responses aligned with the reform of the mental health system that started in twenty fourteen that aims to serve all people living in Lebanon, including refugees and displaced population. We're making sure that activities are feeding into system strengthening and not building vertical programs that will die out once the funding stops. Why were we, despite all those challenges, able to do that? I think that there's a long list of facilitating factor, but I'll mention three of them. One, having a governing body, the National Mental Health Program at the Ministry of Public Health, already leading on the reform of the mental health system and coordinating with all stakeholders around one strategy. This also helped mainstreaming MHPSS internally at the MOPH within the overall COVID-19. within the overall COVID-19 national response. Two, adopting a collaborative governance model and having all stakeholders around the table. Three, using crisis as an opportunity. We did this with the humanitarian crisis with the Syrian displaced. We did it for COVID, and we did it for responding to the Beirut blast. Using crisis as an opportunity to strengthen the ongoing efforts to reform the mental health system for all people living in Lebanon and avoiding parallel vertical programming for refugees and displaced population. Also, using other agendas such as the SDGs, gender equality, universal health coverage to push mental health forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, so now... Thank you very much, Dr. Al Shamai, for your insight on this important issue. I'm really very pleased to hear, you know, about a very wealthy experience that we have gone through. As you said, you know, sharing with us your personal story, beginning of the war or in the middle of the war in Lebanon, in the 1980s and beyond, and also last year blast that has happened in Beirut, which we all have seen. It is really a very heartbreaking, you know, thing to see. The beautiful Beirut, that is really dissected into different parts, and many people have lost their belongings, many people have gone through stress and lost their belongings, in fact. So thank you very much for bringing up that sort of experience. May I invite now, you know, a person or a colleague who is really from the heart of such talks that we are making all the time. We are now pleased to have Mr. Omar Saad Ibrahim. He'll be talking about, you know, user of mental health and psychological stress services in the community. And Mr. Omar is from Iraq and currently residing in Jordan. Mr. Omar will share his personal experience from the community perspectives on the availability of mental health and psychological support services during COVID-19. And he will also share his perspectives with us on how to make mental health services more available and more affordable as well, and how to increase their suitability for the needs of individuals, which is at the heart of our talk, based on the import of the banalist that we have heard from them. So, Mr. Omar, the floor is yours, please. I don't know, do I need to translate in Arabic or are you going? There's a translation, yeah. So the floor is yours, please, Mr. Omar. Go ahead.
شكرًا لك سيدي وشكرا لانه اعطيت لي الفرصة ان أتحدث بهذا المنتد الرائع. بالحقيقة يعني قبل ما ابلش ان أتكلم عن تجربتي الشخصية احب ان أوضح واتفق مع الدكتور ربيع. كون انه ولدنا العراق مر بمشاكل حروب كثيرة وحرب اهلية ما بعدها. بالفعل احنا مرينا بمراحل القصف على البيوت والقصف والحرب الاهلية والقتال بين الناس وبين المدنين. هذه اثرت في فترة ما انا كنت بالعراق يعني زادت من الضغوطات النفسية. انا كنت مراهق في هذه الفترة. زادت من ضغوطات النفسية علي لكن لم يكن متوفر في ذاك الزمن او في ذاك الوقت فكرة المعالجة النفسية او الاستشارات النفسية. في جهات معينة بالبلد في مشاكل ولا زال. بعد ما غادرت العراق وانا حاليا باحث عن نجوق في الأردن تعرضت لي وهي هي تجربتي الشخصية تعرضت لضغط معين وكان هذا الضغط خلال فترة الاغلاق. يعني اول فترة الاغلاق ما غلقت كل كرة الأرضية موش بس الأردن. فلتجئت لحد المنظمات لغرض اخذ مشورات نفسية ولغرض التفريغ او خلينا نحكي عنه الفضفة خلينا نحكيها اذا كنا بدنا نحكي بالعامية. الفكرة انه انا كنت مضغوط كثيرا وتعرضت لضغط يعني كنت مضغوط اصلا بسبب انه انا لاجيء وبسبب انه عندي مشاكل كتير وانه انا هارب من مشاكل تلاحظني هاي مشاكل امنية طبعا. ضافة لها مشكلة صارت في هذا الوقت اللي كان شهر راضع تحديدا فلتجئت لمنظمة تعمل بالاستشارات النفسية وهم فادوني كثيرا الحمد لله وخففوا من هاي الضغوط علي. لكن الفكرة يعني ما بعرف يمكن انا لانه انا ابحث او ممكن انه اجد منظمات او ابحث من خلال Google والانترنت بس ما بعرف انه اذا هو الموضوع اصلا متوفر للجميع او هل انه ممكن الجميع يصلون اليه. يعني هذا الموضوع ما عندي علم فيه لانه يعني الفكرة انه هي جائحة ضافة ضافة ضغوط على الناس كثيرا. ضافة على المجتمع المضيف لللاجئين وعلى اللاجئين نفسهم اللي هم اصلا يحملون هموم يحملون هموم الخوف يحملون هموم الدماغ الحروب اللي شافوها التأكدات الامنية اللي مرت عليهم تجاربهم الشخصية اللي سيئة فهاي كلها ضافة اعباء عليهم اعباء نفسية متعبة وضغوطات. اجت الجائحة زادت من الموضوع اما بسبب الخوف من خوف من فضان وظيفة الخوف من عدم القدرة على الوصول الى الغذاء عدم القدرة على تأمين الغذاء الخوف على الاولاد الخوف مثل ما افضلت الدكتور نجاة قبل شوي انه الخوف من اللاقاب للوباء او الورس مخاوف عديدة. انضافة للمخاوف الرئيسية اللي هي موجودة عند اللاجئين ضافة عليها اعباء وضغوطات متعبة. ممكن اضيف شيء يعني عن تجربتي الشخصية انا ضافت لي خوف جديد اللي هو خوف من انه ما ممكن انه يمكن المفاضي شلون لاجئين تجد لي حل اللي هو الحل اللي انا جاي يعني على اساسه اللي هو انه تجد لي حل دائم انه اسافر لانه انغلقت المطارات او الدول بلشت انه بطلت تاخذ لاجئين. هاي الضغوط النفسية كلها زادت سواء على مستوى شخصي او على المجتمعات. بس ما يعني ما مثل ما قلت يعني حكيد لكم. يمكن ان الصعب على كل الناس سواء كانوا لاجئين او اهل البلد انه يصلوا لمركز دعم النفسي لانه هي مو واضح للجميع فكرة الدعم النفسي مو واضح للجميع. يمكن تحتاج شرح اكثر يمكن تحتاج توفير منظمات اكثر. الموضوع مو بالسهولة اضافة الى plus انه الناس وخص المنطقة العربية يمكن تفتهم موضوع الدعم النفسي بشكل اخر. يعني ممكن يعتبروه وصمة ما يعتبروه انه هو الموضوع هذا بالعكس هو موضوع تخفيف وهو مرض مثل اي مرض ممكن انه يجاعش بالطريقة الصحيحة لو لو توفرت الظروف الصحيحة لعلاج. ما اتمناه بما ان احنا نتكلم واتشرف انه اتكلم ضمن هذا المنتد اللي فيه المدراء الاقليمين والناس اللي هم المتخدين للقرار. اتمنى توفير مراكز اكثر لدعم النفسي تحديدا لللاجئين وبشكل عام للمجتمعات المضيفة لللاجئين مثل الأردن مثل لبنان مثل مصر يمكن بالدول الاخرى الله اعلمنا كان انا اتكلم بدول الكتباظ اللي فيها لاجئين كثيرين. اللاجئين يعانون من ضغوطات نفسية كبيرة وانا واحد منهم المتكلم واحد منهم. الضغوطات هذه اللي انا يمكن تكلمت عنها بشكل سريع هذه الضغوطات بسبب مشاكل قديمة بسبب المشاكل الحالية اللي ادت يعني اللي نتجت عن COVID-19 اللي هي من ضمنها مثلا مثلا بدنا نعطي مثال سريع. وقت ما يبدأ وقت الحظر اغلب الدول عملت حظر فعشان الناس تعرف انه قلش وقت الحظر بيطلق الدولة الحكومة بتطلق صافرات الامدار. صافرات الامدار هاي بحذتها ترجع ذكريات اليمى وصعب لاي شخص مر بمراحل حرب في بلده. اتمنى على المتخدين القرار انه يوفر الدعم النفسي اكثر للمجتمعات المضيفة وللاجئين تحديدا. اتمنى انه يسهل ويسر امر الوصول الى فكرة العلاج النفسي او الاستشارات النفسية. يمكن ما بعرف انا ما عندي احصاءات او رقم دقيق لكن بدي احكي انه يمكن 80% من اللاجئين بغرض نظر عن الجنسية هم عندهم ضغوطات نفسية او مشاكل نفسية بحاجة الى مو شرط علاج بس يمكن يكون بحاجة الى فضفة بحاجة الى تفريغ يعني تفريغا في عالي مثل ما يحكوا انه بس يفرق ويتكلم. يوفر يوفر اجور النقل مثلا اجور النقل من الى يعني من بيت الشخص الى المركز النفسي. يمكن هذا راح تسألوا يعني هو يعرف هو يمكن يعرف انه في مركز نفسي بس ما عنده القدرة انه يروح للمركز النفسي ما عنده القدرة المادية يعرفون. يشرحونهم اكثر طبعا هاي يعني يمكن من خلال المفاضي شلون اللاجئين او المنظمات اخرى. يشرحون ايش هو الدعم النفسي يعني في يمكن مثل ما تكلمت لكم انه في ناس تفهم موضوع الدعم النفسي والامراض النفسية انه هي وصمة عار رغم انه هي موش وصمة عار يعني يمكن هي نص الحل اللاجئ. مثل ما يعرفون الاساتذة الدكاترة انه نص المرض يمكن او نص العلة هي الحال النفسية. يعني يمكن الشخص اللي لاجيء لو حالته نفسية تحسنت امور حياته الاخرى تحسن يعني يمكن يقدر انه يطلع يشتغل يمكن انه يقدر انه ينتظر اكثر الى حد ما المفاضي المفاضي شلون اللاجئين تلاقي له حل. توفير مراكز دعم نفسي اكثر التعريف بالدعم النفسي وما هي الدعم النفسي. تسهيل فكرة تسهيل فكرة الوصول للعلاج النفسي والدعم النفسي مو شرط عن طريق المراكز مو شرط عن طريق توفير المادة للوصول من خلال النقل. فتح هواتف فتح هواتف موبايلات او خطوط أرضية ويتكلموا فيها الناس مع المستشارين النفسين او المعالجين النفسية. انا اشكركم اشكركم جدا على سعة صدركم اولا وعلى سمعكم لقصتي المختصر انا حكيت بشكل المختصر وعلى السماح لي ان اشارك بهذا المنتد الرائع. شكرا لكم اتمنى لكم يوم سعيد.
شكرًا يا استاذ Omar. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Omar, for sharing your experience and for your suggestions. The suggestion of a psychological support center, of a hotline for refugees. And as you say, most of us need a place to be able to talk to someone. Not necessarily that we're facing particular mental health issues that we're dealing with, but we need to be able to have someone to speak to. Thank you so much for sharing your experience. Friends, we don't have much time for the question and answer session as is often the case with these online meetings. So what we propose to do is give one question to each of the panelists and ask them if they could briefly respond. And in the process of responding, also perhaps give us their one takeaway message that they want the participants to take away from this session before Dr. Ahmad and I conclude. The first question goes to Dr. Najat. Dr. Najat, the question is: How can mental health and psychosocial support be mainstreamed in the preparedness, response, and recovery plans across sector to enhance development of gender-sensitive quality and equitable MHPSs services? And I think people are looking at the post-COVID reality that we're going to be dealing with. Over to you, Dr. Najat.
Thank you. Thank you Ted. I will be short. I think many things were already told, and I just want to highlight some points. How we can make sure that it's mainstreamed, you know, within the Preparedness Emergency Protocol, but also in Building Back Better. And I think we told many things regarding building on the lessons learned of COVID pandemic. The pandemic has shown that it's not only a problem of physical health. It's more wider than that. It's not only a problem of economic crisis. It's more wider than that. But also it's about mental well-being and social and emotional well-being. And I think this is important. It showed us also, and we have already many results, and it was some of them were showed and highlighted, that anxiety, depression, behavioral disorder, sleeping and eating disorder, suicide, behavioral, drug addiction, and so on are increasing. And I think we will receive a lot. And just to let you know also that socioeconomic impact will also increase the risk of violence against children exploitation, but also will impact, you know, migration. Because many persons are going also to leave some countries for looking for better opportunities. Just to let you know that many things. And we need to take this, this building back better, as an opportunity to reassess. We have not to do a choice. Are we going to invest in economic and after? No, we need and all of us, we need and we have already growing evidence that we need to see integrated services related to children, you know, not only based on child protection, sure we need it, but child protection, education, health and mental health, justice system, as well as sustainable social protection system are really required. And they are an investment. And we need to show that when you are doing like that, it's really you have a high return on investment. Mental health, it's not a luxury, you know, service. We need to work to start detecting the risk factors, we know them, the protective factors, we know them. Detecting, you know, earlier before it occurs, before the mental illness become more serious with all the economic and human costs that we know. And I think the main big message, we need to use this opportunity to reassess our priority, to reform the mental health system, but not only to link it with the other system, including social and child protection system, and link it also, you know, what it's very important, to the frontline services. This is very important, and to all the community care. This is very important. We need to have informal and formal link together. And my last point is also to make sure that children and young people are really, really involved because they know better than us really what we can do with them and for them. And they can become really wonderful, positive actors of change mainly in this region when we know that due to cultural and social norm, it's very difficult really to discuss about mental health issues. Over to you, Ted.
Okay, great, great. Thank you very much, Dr. Najat, for your elaboration on these important questions. And if you don't mind, colleagues, I have in fact received the two questions for Professor Sheikr, and if you don't mind, I'm going to just briefly read them. Because I felt these are very important and interlinked, I mean linked work we discuss. The first question, and both are coming from Magida Al Ghaali and Maryam Al Qasmi. Doctors, you know, how to balance between addressing basic needs of communities while focusing on mental health issues? And she added, unless the basics are addressed, any effort in the later would be looked at as a luxury service. And she added also, this is the fact in our Arabic. The second question: To what extent can the psychological impact of the Corona epidemic on families and individuals in general be measured? Such as home quarantine and limited mobility. Back to you, Professor Sheikr.
Thank you very much, RD, and it's such a pleasure to listen to some of the other panel members. I would very briefly answer the two questions that have been posed to me. I think it has already been made very clear that mental health is not only part of health, but it's also part of the overall development, social development as well as economic development. And we balance things based on where we are. And seeing that the Arab world is going through a lot of transition and a lot of socioeconomic change and adversities, we really need to balance between both the things. Looking after the basic needs of the people, poverty is very high, educational levels are still not adequate, and refugee situation is very bad and increasing. So we really need to invest in that, but to invest wisely so that everybody can get benefit of that. And some of the socioeconomic determinants of mental health are taken care of. As my colleague, Dr. Al Shamai, mentioned, we need to do both. We need to look after the socioeconomic determinants, but we also need to provide direct and immediate help. I would very clearly say that mental health is not at all a luxury. It is an essential component of the health and development agenda and must be seen as that. Invest more and invest widely and wisely so that everybody can benefit from that. And that is what the UN Secretary General has said. And I think that is the best strategy to follow during COVID and after COVID. Taking to the second question, the measurement issue, yes, a lot of measurement is possible and is being done. Just like we are measuring the rate of infection as well as the mortality because of just like we are measuring the rate of infection as well as the mortality because of Covid mental health situation can be measured in terms of anxiety in terms of depression in terms of suicide rate and all of those data are actually available it's a matter of using those data for the policy so my suggestion is that WHO and the entire UN family also UNICEF starts a process to actually collect these data from countries and make it available to countries with suggestions as to how immediately these can be used and this should not have a lag period of one year it should have a lag period of a few weeks so that we can reflect back and see how to use those kind of data immediately into the programming by countries and all of these technologies are available data are available we just need to make sure that they're available to the right people in the right form and can make the basis for the policy next week rather than next year thank you very much sir
thank you very much Dr Sheikar the next question is to Dr Abir it's from Zara Sheikh and the question is the following have you considered the prospects of task sharing community-based approaches and she cites a specific example of the Friendship Bench in Zimbabwe she's asking if such a task sharing approach could be done in Arab regions to combat mental health disorders or mental health using holistic approaches while keeping local cultural factors in mind Dr Abir the floor is yours
thank you Dr Shaivan and thank you for the question as well but before starting I would just like to salute Mr Omar Al-Hamadani for his courage and his eloquence in communicating about mental health I know how much courage it takes for a man in this region to talk about his mental health so thank you for that in terms of task shifting I think what
شكرا لكم
I think what's really important is to have a full system in place and I think we've tried for a long time and I know the Friendship Bench and the people around it and it's amazing what's important is to have a system level approach and not one intervention to respond to all the mental health needs so it really depends on the resources of the country and the stepped up care model that should be in place as Dr Majid and Dr Saxena said there are different tools that are already available that can be used I think what's really important for me is to do a paradigm shift and it's time to look at mental health as an asset that will accelerate other key SDGs and not as an expense that will only raise the bill of the health budget I think we have now enough evidence about the impact of mental health on positive outcomes on health in general on academic performance on gender equality on communities wellbeing and economies and we have enough knowledge about what needs to be done and we have clear roadmaps I think what's still lacking to my sense and which I hope now Covid has opened the eyes of the government too is the will to invest but as Dr Saxena said to invest wisely in mental health and more so in mental health system reforms with a well-resourced governing body a clear strategy implemented with all stakeholders using clear and effective coordination mechanism that go beyond the health sector I think this is really what is needed right now
okay thank you thank you very much for your answers on this important question now may I go and just share one question with Mr Saad which is given from one of the colleagues it says here you know to you Mr Saad shall I read it in Arabic or English
Arabic
okay so but I think it's better to give it to the translators it is written in English sorry for that allocation to mental health and psychosocial support services is very low but need is very high as you have said Mr Saad we have to raise our common advocacy voice to dedicate more allocations to mental health and psychosocial services or psychosocial support services the question here how can be or can we build the community ownership on the psychosocial services interventions Saad yeah Mr Saad are you is he still online Mr Omar Mr Omar are you still there
عفوا ممكن اعادت السؤال نعم نعم موجود بس الصوت غير واضح
سمعت الترجمة سمعت الترجمة استاذ Saad استاذ ابراهيم سمعت الترجمة
ممكن اعادت السؤال
نعم السؤال انا راح ترجم لك اياه بالعربي طبعا مثل ما تفضلت حضرتك انه يعني هناك شح في الموارد المتفردة لخدمات الرعاية النفسية والدعم النفسي للمحتاجين على الرغم من الاحتياج العالي جدا كما تفضلت يعني وخصوصا في المجموعات التي تعاني من ازمات نفسية يعني
لا ما ممكن اعادت السؤال
السؤال السؤال هو استاذ ابراهيم كيف ممكن احنا كمجتمعات نعاني من هذا الشح في الموارد في هذا المجال نعمل على خلق نور من التبنية مثل هذا المشروع وبالتالي تحفيز الكهات المختصة في الدولة على رفع الخدمات في هذا المجال
is he استاذ maybe you can ask him has he heard otherwise I think we can ask other three panelists هل سمعتني استاذ ابراهيم can you hear me are you online Omar استاذ عمر سمعتني استاذ عمر yeah sorry I mean I'll go back to the other three panelists you know because it seems we have some technical problem connecting with Mr Omar the question here it says the question here it says how can we as community members advocate for the community ownership of these sort of services in spite of the low availability and high demand so Dr Najat or Professor Sheikar or Victoria Shami please feel free to give your intervention Dr Najat please go ahead
okay I will react very shortly due to time constraints I think really it's using the SDG framework really for mobilizing you know all key stakeholders including community level it's really important this is one and another point is really the question is about ownership and we since the beginning we were discussing about also ensuring that all the community services that already existing in an informal way or formal way are linked to the wide system of health and mental health system this is this is one the other point regarding this region we need also to mobilize due to the cultural norms because we are in our region it's very difficult for persons really to discuss and to raise their mental issues and mental problems and I think it's really important and some countries in this region are mobilizing religious community leaders children themselves young people women really to height to raise awareness about mental health and also how we can work very early in detecting the risk factors but also in acting earlier to avoid you know having all this mental illness I think it's really important to use the SDG framework and also building back better from the pandemic as a key opportunity for mobilizing all key stakeholders not only at national level but at local level including all the communities to make sure that they are duly informed and they are mobilized over to you
thank you thank you very much Dr Najat we are really very pleased to have you all in this important discussion and looking forward you know from both teams in UNICEF and WHO to take these recommendations suggestions remarks further for implementation and we assure you that this discussion is really an eye opener to us all based on the wisdom that is shared by the four panelists as well as questions raised by participants so we'll take it further Insha Allah now we are approaching the final sort of concluding remarks in the session I'll just give a few key messages and then I'll ask my dear brother Ted you know to give his own remarks before we conclude based on the discussion as I said there are many key messages I'm just sharing with you some in fact you know the first message take home message is you know that we need to recognize the historic opportunity to reimagine mental health systems and apply a whole of society approach to promote protect and care for mental health across the life course through building on the vast body of evidence with the active engagement of all relevant stakeholders particularly people with live experience in the community the second message you know to ensure that additional resources are mobilized for strengthening mental health services systems along with the effective and efficient utilization of resources to develop community-based integrated mental health systems for promotion of mental health prevention of mental disorders and care and recovery of people with mental health problems the third message mental health psychological support services needs to be integrated in the national emergency preparedness response and recovery plans to ensure wellbeing of people and resilience of communities my last message urgent need to strengthen for information evidence and research on mental health to inform appropriate resource allocation and support policies and evidence-based interventions to address mental health needs of the population with appropriate resource allocation and there are many other messages I'm sorry because of time that maybe it can be added to the report that is going to be combined but back to you Ted thank you very much
thank you very much Dr Ahmed and thanks to all the panelists and apologies to Mr Omar for the problem with the technical translation at the end let me raise a few commitments that we're proposing we make going forward first of all is a holistic and life cycle approach to mental health looking at early childhood adolescents young adults other vulnerable groups such as refugees with a focus on prevention second WHO UNICEF and UN partners call on member states and other stakeholders to accelerate the momentum for mental health by advocating and allocated race resources for mainstreaming mental health and psychosocial support in their humanitarian as well as development agenda third as the speakers have said the pandemic has bought home the message that investment in mental health is important not only for achieving the health SDGs but also for ensuring security and development of member states as several speakers have said and Omar has indicated the socio-economic consequences and pressures of mental health are important and the tools that are disposed including social protection are key fourth we call upon governments private sector academia faith-based organization NGOs foundation and other entities to come together to commit to long-term development of human resources and the capacity and building the capacities of professional paraprofessionals and volunteers across sectors not just health but social service welfare force education protection to ensure a coordinated and sustainable delivery of mental health and psychosocial support systems we also need as indicated by a number of the participants today to de-stigmatize mental health challenges and to speak to the issues of mental health so that those who need support are open to seeking that support we need to advocate for programs that treat the family as a unit addressing both the needs of parents and caregivers as well as children we as WHO and UNICEF will collectively work towards supporting Arab member states and communities in addressing these challenges through actions that both organizations have recently agreed in the joint framework on mental health and psychosocial wellbeing and development and finally we stand together committed in every way to accelerate actions on mental health in the MENA region including for the most vulnerable not leaving anyone behind including people like Omar who so bravely spoke to us today colleagues it's been a pleasure to be with you today thank you to my brother Dr Ahmed for this excellent session please count on WHO and UNICEF to be with you going forward have a good day colleagues
thank you Ted bye bye